Okay, so we'll move on to our committee of the whole. We have the full agenda there today. It was published on our website. And with that published agenda, are there any decoration of interest, culinary or other? Okay, if one does arise, you can be clear at that time. There are a number of items there for consent. Are any of those items wish to be pulled for suffered discussion and motion to head to the later part of the agenda? They need to be pulled? Okay, if not. Oh, yes, and council whoever did indicate that he had to leave early today. So he has left our meeting. So if there's no wish, not no items to be pulled, can I have a mover or a second or please for the consent? Counselor Burley? Oh, yeah, we'll get. Counselor Borgonar, we're gonna, I can't, I I'll get. Peter, how do you say your last name? So I get it right?
Think of beef boiling you. It's a.
Borgonar.
Yeah, I'm Italian, but it sounds French, so you could just say more than you.
Okay. Before the year, there you go. Thanks, Deputy Ward. We're gonna, okay. You have second the motion and I'll get bar clump this the next time. So, okay, so that's on the floor. And so then, other, since there's no discussion on that, all in favor of those items? That's carried. All right, moving on into items for discussion. That's item A with regards to the University of Wealth Students Project. And who's taking that lead on that one? Scott, okay, so come on up. Yes, I need a mover in a second or put that on the floor. Counselor Hutchinson, I'll vote Counselor Columbus, there we go. So good morning. Sorry.
Good morning, Deputy Warden McQueen and members of County Council. So I'm here today with Linda Swanson and I'll be taking the first part of this report and she'll be taking the second part. So this is a bit of a good news story for Gray County. This is a follow up to a report that was presented to Committee of the Whole on February 10th, 2022. With respect to two projects that we were lucky enough to work with students from the University of wealth on. And just for 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 council and the viewing public's benefit. These are projects that are undertaken by University of wealth masters, planning students. And they're done at no cost to the county. And it really is a win win scenario because the students get some firsthand research abilities in in working sort of in the in the quasi consulting field. And the county gets valuable research presented to us. So with respect to one of the projects, one of the projects was entitled the density is not a density is not a dirty word guide. And so this was a summary to to help us tell our story with respect to the benefits and the merits of seeing some density in our community. And this report was created by four talented students, Abigail, Andrea, Maria and Shivani. And I do apologize, there was an inadvertent error in the in the report and I left out Shivani's name. So that has since been corrected, but my apologies in that regard. And and what the student team did in this regard was they spoke to local planners, they spoke to local developers and others. To to get their feelings on on density, both what's currently in our communities and what the future of our communities might look like in this regard. They also conducted some research at the provincial, national and international level to look at other examples of of communities that had guidance and educational materials on density that we could learn from here in Gray. And and what's come out recently at various public meetings and in in public discussions, both at the county level, and I would say even at the provincial level. Is there's definitely a need for more education on this topic. There can be a fear by by residents that density can be a losing proposition and and there are fears and concerns with respect to density. That I think we in in the planning department need to do a better job of of getting out in front of and having those community conversations and and trying to provide some education. We had a recent developers open house for for a new development in Gray County. And and I just took down some of the comments and and there was people that were asking questions along the lines of who wants this project? Is there anyone in our community who wants this drastic shift in our community? Or is it simply for the profit of an outside company? And I think when I hear these questions, it reflects on a failure of of planning staff in that we haven't communicated what our own policy direction says, we haven't communicated the benefits and the needs and the opportunities within our within our community in this regard, and they are plenty. Whether it be linking back to climate change, who you're going to hear from Linda on just shortly. Our new age friendly community strategy, or even just efficient use of of our infrastructure and consequently our taxpayer dollars in that regard. So I think there's lots to learn from from projects like this. The students provided some recommendations on updating our official plans and zoning bylaws. They provided some updates on on types of educational materials we could share, including sort of a myths and facts section about density. So some quick kind of FAQs, if you will, that help explain sort of the the opportunities that arise from density. They talked about affordable housing. And they also talked about when we're doing this education, there's a variety of audiences. And so first and foremost, might be to the public. We also want to talk to our development community. But another exciting opportunity as as we're in a year of of double elections with both provincial and municipal elections is reaching out to to those newly elected people after our elections to help that help include them on the conversation. Because we know that elections at all levels of, or sorry, politicians at all levels of government are going to be faced with questions, particularly around affordable housing. And and density is a very key component here. So we're so thankful for the students for completing this work and and we see this work as as a sort of a building block and and the county will take this work or refine some of the messaging in the work and 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 some of the graphics and documentation and work with our own county communication staff to 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 package it in in a a format that can be easily be understood by the by members of the public. And as much as possible, we want to make that as planner free as possible. So that it is interesting and it is it is understandable to the public. So that's just my quick summary of of this guide and I'll turn it over to Linda with respect to the green development standards.
Well, thanks, Scott, and good morning, Linda. Welcome.
So I was lucky enough to be able to leverage these students to produce a second report around what a green development standard could look like here in Gray County. And you'll all recall recently when the first climate change action plan was adopted, that one of the key next steps was to explore a green development standard that was appropriate for Gray County's context. So the students undertook a variety of work for us. One of the things they looked at was the legislative framework in which a green development standard could advance. So they reviewed the Planning Act, the provincial policy statement and the municipal act to really see, you know, what the legislative basis could be of a green development standard. They also looked at the technical side of things. So they reviewed existing standards for new construction, including lead, the Canadian Green Building Council Zero Carbon Building Standard and also the federal energy star standard. So basically, we were really clear that there's no need for Gray County to be reinventing the wheel around what makes an energy efficient or low carbon building. But rather looking at some of the great work that's already happened and seeing how it makes sense in our weather, in our climate, with our development community. One of the things that connected this project to the project that Scott spoke to is a very clear relationship between density and greenhouse gas emissions for development. So generally, the greater the density of a community, the lower the greenhouse gas emissions. And so that's also part of the educational piece that we'll be looking at is sort of helping to explain why it can help our environment. If new development does have a slightly higher density. And from my perspective, one of the most useful pieces of work that they produced for us was a jurisdictional scan. As I said, we're not the first on the technical standards, but we're also not the first in terms of looking at a green development standard. So they reviewed municipalities across Ontario, including rural jurisdictions like Halton Hills and East Willenberry. Halton Hills is actually on their third iteration of a green development standard that's been in place since around 2010. So there's really an opportunity for Gray County to kind of learn from some of those early adopters as we move forward with this work. The last thing in their report was similarly to Scott's report, a process of recommendations of how we could move forward. And central to it was extensive consultation. This is not the kind of initiative that can kind of be brought forward without deep discussions with all member municipalities, along with the local development community. So there's some advice to us on how we might move forward with that. And in terms of next steps, we'll be using this report as a foundation to issue a request for proposals going forward to have consultant support in looking at what a green development standard could be for us. So with that, thank you, and I think Scott and I are happy to take questions.
Well, thanks, Linda. And 20 years ago, it used to be the standards of R2000. And then I think they had problems around mold and too tight and houses need to be breathing and stuff like that. People remember that, right? So I do have a question, Counselor Mellon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and Scott's comment regarding the 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 density report. I think you're being a little hard on yourself when you say it's a failure of planning staff. In my mind, it's a failure of the community to listen to what's being said. One paragraph particularly jumped out at me when I read the report and it says, if you mind, if if you don't mind, Mr. Warden, I'll read it. With more economic influence within the market, the opportunity for better spaces exists. The key to successful places is the transaction base and must also provide spaces for social and cultural inter or transaction. However, within the base of economic activity at many different levels and layers, it will not be possible to create good spaces. Since good spaces bring people and attract more opportunities. The importance is to keep these transactions in public spaces as they result in and provide better quality of life and encourages activity within the community. That jumps out to me to say that density is a good thing. And it's certainly not a failure of the planning staff or the report. We need to listen. People coming is not a bad thing. It's a good thing for our communities without new people coming, the community dies. And we don't want that. So congratulations, it's a good report. Thank you very much, and it's very appreciated.
Thank you for that, Counselor Mellon, and I will say, yeah, it's density or taking farmland. Because farmland is getting gobbled up, right? And and that sort of thing, right? So other comments, questions from council members is a good report there, Council decide.
Thank you, Deputy Warden McQueen. Again, to just build on that. A lot of people, a lot of our public here think that the NMBism or and higher density is something that is unique to Toronto where people don't want high rises going up in their backyards, but that is not necessarily the case that is happening here. It's happening in rural communities. One of a a the Deputy Mayor of Them Center in Middlesex County posted a her opinion on density yesterday on Facebook and that resulted in in town staff being inundated with calls of how the higher density is going to cut cause an increase in welfare housing and ghettos. And I think it's important that we we do this education around why density is is good. And it's not as the as the motion says, it's not a dirty word. And I really appreciate staff bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, so it's a change. We just have to get used to the change, right? So absolutely. Seeing there's no other discussion on that. Well, thank you very much for, oh, I'm sorry, I've a counselor Borgonar, we're gonna, I can't still can't say it right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Ward McQueen, not a problem. Agreeing with Counselor Mellon and Desai as as we move forward about density. Both are, you know, I feel the same way they do. And as you said, you know, I grew up on a farm and I saw now my dad's farm is a subdivision. So either you out or you go up. And you know, sometimes you have to go up and sometimes three stories doesn't cut it for a social economic reasons. The other thing I would like to have seen a little bit more is attainable housing that is a welcome new people. There has to be some people. And to counsel the size point, there's a difference between affordable, social and attainable housing. So, you know, I think we have to be all cognizant as we move forward when it comes to density. But sometimes we need to also make those units attainable. And that's not socialized housing is sometimes that's just in the municipality where you need, where the, you know, the manage the home hardware can can afford to live and work in town that he's in. So I I think that by looking at density is is a good thing. You also have to look at how you control that density when it comes to some attainable housing as well as maybe built, like I said, building up as opposed to building out. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Go ahead, Counselor Keveney.
My apologies. Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. And I just wanted to add that as we are speaking right now, the Gray Bruce Foundation is releasing their vital signs for housing report. And I'm sorry, the timing and conflicted with our meeting today or I'd be there. But I just think it's it's incredibly important to recognize that many, many groups are working right now on this issue of affordable housing, which of course includes a discussion of density. So I'm curious to hear from staff as to their thoughts of how we can come together and work together. Because we recognize that housing for all the new terminology is absolutely critical to the success of of Gray County and to all of us as lower tiers. Because without that, we can't attract the workforce that we so desperately need. Over to you, Scott.
Thanks for that, Counselor Keveney. I know with the business that you had, you had trouble finding workforce yourself, right? So go ahead, Scott.
Great, thanks through you, Deputy Warden, to Counselor Keveney. And and first off, thank you to the other counselors for your supportive comments with respect to this report. That's great to hear. With respect to Counselor Keveney's questions, great to to point out about the Community Foundation's excellent work that they're presenting here today. And and we had some county staff that were invited to that as well. Some couldn't attend because of council today, but there are some and attendance, I believe, some staff from Anne Marie's Department and Housing are there. One of the things we've had the benefit on as staff is is some of the discussions that have come out through the county's Affordable Housing Task Force and council showing great leadership in that regard. And and it's helped to open the eyes of of how many partners we have involved in in housing across our community. From the not for profits, from the groups like the the Community Foundation, the developers themselves, the people with lived experience in in those situations. And and you know, it's 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 sort of, I guess, incumbent on staff to continue to make those connections and continue to to have those discussions with those groups. And I know, at least in planning, we've learned a lot from some of the contacts that economic development has shared with us and also some of the contacts from the the Housing Department. So we're going to continue to foster those relationships and 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 look where we can make those partnerships. And and then, you know, I think to the project that we've got going on right now with respect to the surplus lands and and a lot of the work that Liz Buckton and Becky Hillier are doing in that regard. There's going to be a lot more community conversations on this topic with respect to housing. And and similar to some of Counselor Board and Y'all's comments. We really need to be stressing that that it's it's all forms of housing. We do need the affordable housing, we do need the attainable housing. We need housing for for older adults, we need housing for our youth. I realize this is a bit of a rambling answer, sorry. But it is, it is only through working together, also with our provincial and federal partners, that we're going to make an impact in this in this challenging time, so to speak.
Thanks, Scott. Your comments, go ahead, Counselor Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and through you, just in regards to the green development standards and affordability. We talk about affordable housing. Do the green standards increase the the cost per square foot to build? And if if so, by how much? I've heard from builders that you could purchase windows for $2,000 or you could purchase windows for $40,000 to meet certain standards. So just wondering how the two mesh affordable and green standards. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Maggie, go ahead, Linda.
Through you, Deputy Warden. So I think there's there's two components of costs that are important to think about with relation to green development. So one is the upfront investment to your question, and the other is the long term operating cost of the building once it's built. So in terms of the upfront investment, it of course depends on location and climate. And there's research from the Rocky Mountain Institute, which is in Colorado, so it is the US, but it's cold weather. And they looked at net zero construction across the US. And they they estimated that the cost increment in a cold weather climate for a net zero or a net zero ready building. So basically, a building that if you if you added solar panels or renewable energy would be at net zero, but at the time, you know, it's just very, very well insulated and efficient. Their estimate of the initial investment was an increment was between two and 10%. So it's not as large as most people I think would expect. And they did a check. And so then, when you look at the second part of affordability, which is around operating cost. What you see is a real opportunity for the residents of these green or low carbon buildings to be saving money throughout the entire lifetime of the asset, because it's cheaper to run, because you're using less energy. And so they calculated a payback on a net zero building in Chicago. And I want to say that it came out at five, five or six years. So basically, the energy savings that you have on your utility bills in that sort of, let's say, five to 10 year period can offset the upfront investment in building to a higher green standard. So those won't be the numbers here, of course, it's going to be unique to us. But certainly, understanding that relationship is a big part of this work. Thank you for the question.
Good question, other comments? I always make that note that best practices is windbreaks and and inciting it to the sun, right? Because you'll see a lot of farms and farms that have windbreaks is to is to cut that wind and cut down that wind chill, right? So you know, there's a lot to do with citing for sure. All right, seeing there's no other comments, questions. Thank you very much for bringing that forward and all in favor of that motion. That's carried unanimously. Thank you. So moving on to our next item, it's regards to Sunvale subdivision, West Break. And I have a mover and a second or also Robinson, Counselor Hutchinson, I guess you guys want to be on top of that one. All right, all right, again, Scott, welcome. And
Great, thank you very much, Deputy Warden McQueen. So council may recall that in in 2018, the Committee of the Whole draft approved a plan of subdivision in the in the municipality of West Gray in Durham, which was known as the Sunvale subdivision. And that original approval was for 118 single detached dwellings, 60 semi detached dwellings and 64 townhouses. Since that time, the developer has registered phase one of this development. And that is well underway in in construction and nearing completion there. And phase one was 61 residential lots and and two multi residential blocks. Based on that the county's original draft approval, it came with a three year lapse date. And in this case, the the subdivision has since lapsed, so it lapsed in 2021. And it was only realized when the developer was coming in to 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 register phase two in this regard. And with respect to to this lapsing, this is a situation that's occurred a few times over the years in the county whereby a developer didn't extend their draft approval and therefore they lapsed. And up until just recently, when that happened, they would have to reapply for the plan of subdivision, go back through another public process. We'd have a public meeting and everything else, and that decision would come back to this body. In this case, the the developer lucked out, so to speak, in that Bill 109 was just recently passed by the province on April 14th, 2022. And a number of members of of council may recall Randy's report to the Affordable Housing Task Force, which summarized the changes being made through Bill 109. And while there were some that the county had questions or even some concerns over, this particular change was something we saw as a very positive move. What it allows the county to to now consider is is to deem a subdivision not to have lapsed. If it were to have lapsed within the past five years, and if there were no pre sale agreements in place with with buyers. And so in this case, the developer through their lawyer has issued an affidavit to suggest that there have been no pre sales. As such, this would be a candidate for this new power under the under the Revised Planning Act as of Bill 109. So what staff are recommending in this regard is that council consider or committee of the whole consider deeming this subdivision not to have lapsed, it would be given another three year period with which they could continue to register and and build homes in that regard. We're further recommending that we consider some changes to the county official plan through official plan amendment number 11, just to to utilize these new planning act provisions. And furthermore, that a change be considered to the delegation of duties bylaw such that this power would be delegated to staff where we have support from the host municipality. And I should have said that right from the outset that very early on in this one, we had a discussion with West Gray and West Gray staff were in full support of of the approach we're recommending here today. So with that, that's my my recommendation, certainly happy to take any questions if there are any.
Scott, questions, comments? So go ahead, Counselor Robinson.
There we go. Thank you, thank you very much for bringing the report forward. There's no question other than to reiterate that West Gray is certainly supportive of this recommendation. And although it was noted in the presentation and the report, just felt that we needed to have that stated. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. I think just moving in second is is quite a statement, so. Other comments, questions? For that, see none, all in favor of that motion? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to. Sure, I thought maybe we could just separate through there and be done by 11:30, but no. All right, we'll take, what do you want, 10 minute break, 15 minute break? Okay, we'll we'll take a break and we'll come back at 11:10. How's that sound? All right, all right.
All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. And continuing on our agenda with item C, gallery redesign grassroots. And we have Joe Patterson is going to present that. Can I have a mover or a second or please? Council Mackey and Council Carlton.
Morning.
Thank you, morning, Warden, and good morning, County Council. So the five-year Gray County gallery update is entering phase two of construction. Following the voices of Gray launch in 2020, staff use the pandemic closures to work behind the scenes to develop the next phases of the gallery redesign and think through the themes and content that will take up the entire perimeter walls of the gallery space. Working with Origin Studios, we have now, we now have an elegant and functional design for phase two. The abundant section of the gallery, which really looks at agriculture, forestry, the abundance of water in this area. The new design will allow us to regularly update the exhibits and keep the gallery experience fresh for returning visitors by drawing attention to the impressive collection at Grey Roots and allowing opportunity for the community to recommend objects and collaboration with staff. With the design in hand, we have received a range of estimates for the fabrication and installation of the abundant section of the gallery. The lowest of which still came in at 56,000 over our 2022 budget allocations. Staff have submitted an application for the Canada Cultural Spaces Fund with Canadian Heritage to receive support of up to 50% of the project costs, which would cover the full deficit. And while we're optimistic, the grant is not guaranteed and will take months to receive a decision on our application. To keep the project on track for completion with this year, this year, with council's blessing, we would like to pull the budget shortfall from Grey Roots 2022 surplus. Or if no surplus is realized, Grey Roots Reserve, General Reserve, if the grant doesn't come through. We also ask to award the project to Wooden Wall Works, who supplied the most reasonable estimate in order to get ahead of additional cost increases brought on by inflation and or material shortages. The space has been prepared and is ready for the new installation. In the interim, we've been using the area for temporary in-house exhibits, such as the good old hockey game, which was presented this winter, and getting to the core, which is an exhibit about apples. Which will be offering until fall of 2022. The new design is setting us up for a long future, where we will not have to completely redesign our exhibits in a 10 to 15-year cycle. It is a polished and timeless look that blends with the modern audible and technology-rich voices of Gray exhibit in the center of the gallery space. The perimeter walls will put the focus on a curated collection of frequently changing exhibits, or sorry, frequently changing artifacts, archival materials and photographs, so that we can tell more stories of Gray County's past and represent a diversity of historical experiences, so that residents see their family's history reflected on the walls of the museum. Thank you for your time and happy to take questions.
Well, thanks, Jill, and thank you for the report. Any comments, questions from councillors? Go ahead, Council Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Joe, for the report. I think any of us that have been or are aware of events in our own communities recognize that the public in general has a real enthusiasm to get out and go to events. They're well subscribed, they're busy, and I think we need to support this to allow Grey Roots to cater to that hunger for new things to do and see in our community. So I think it's important that we support this, and I thank you again for the report.
Thank you for those comments. Do you have any follow-up to that, Jill, or any thoughts to that?
Can you hear me now? Thank you very much, Council Miller, and I think that's absolutely true. We're seeing life just, you know, come full force back to the museum. We've got events coming up. We've got people requesting rentals. School groups are back, which is a huge win. We're so happy to see the village full of kids and happy faces. And I think there's, yeah, it's really coming back full force. Any worries I had that attendance might not recover from the pandemic is just, I don't have those fears anymore at all.
Thank you for that. It's a great opportunity to showcase what we're all about too, right? All right, any other comments to the changes that are coming forward and all that? Seeing none, then all in favor of that motion? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, then, Joe. All right, moving on into our next item, item D with regards to the Canada-wide early learning and childcare. And we have Senator Tara Cockrell, and good morning. And we need a mover in a second, or I see Council Fleet over there has been quiet, so I don't know if he's going to. Move by Council Fleet, do we have a second or Council Robinson? And I will try to catch you on the screen too as well. So, good morning and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. We're here today to provide an update about the Canada-wide early learning and childcare system. The system is intended to reduce fees for parents accessing licensed childcare in the communities across Ontario. And the Ministry of Education has recently released the addendum to the existing service management guidelines. This addendum provides the implementation framework and the compliance indicators for the Canada-wide system. So all existing licensed childcare programs in Gray County will have the opportunity to opt into participating in the Canada-wide system. If a licensee chooses to opt in, they are agreeing to the system requirements as well as the municipal purchase of service agreements. The Ministry of Education has provided additional accountability requirements, including the requirement for the services to managers to conduct financial compliance reviews in the annual submission of audited financial statements. It should be noted that the existing licensed spaces must be supported within the allocation received for 2022. And that allocation is detailed on page four of the report. The Ministry of Education has recognized that 2022 is a year of transition, and the funding allocations for expansion will be addressed in future budget allocations. The Canada-wide system will have unique reporting requirements that will be supported separately from the existing service targets that we have for our current childcare fee subsidy programs. The CMSM will also have the responsibility to determine the reasonableness of profits for privately operated centers. And those levels will also be held to consist, to be consistent with those deemed for nonprofit organizations. Additionally, in the report, it reviews the workforce wage floor grid provided by the Ministry of Education. And it shows the minimum wage floor for registered ECEs only. The wage floor amount includes the existing $2 an hour provincial wage enhancement grant. And it should be noted that the wage floor only supports registered ECEs and does not address wages for other staff supporting the program, including otherwise approved staff. We are hoping to release the applications to our community soon to allow for lots of time for full conversation with our operators prior to the September 1st application deadline with the Ministry of Education. And we are happy to address any questions we may have about the implementation of this system in Gray County.
Thanks, Tara, and thanks for the report. Any comments, questions from county councillors? Well, go ahead, Council Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Good report, Tara. Just one question. Why would one of the operators choose to not opt in to this? What would their reasoning be? Because I would see a lot of pluses for their staff and for the parents.
And through you, Deputy Warden, thank you very much for the question, Council Carlton. We are hoping that all of our operators will opt in and that our conversations will encourage that and show that the intent is to support viability. I believe there may be some current concerns about the reporting requirements. This is all very new information, and the addendum is 74 pages long and is a lot for people to understand. So our goal over the next few months will to address any of those questions for operators. But we are very hopeful that we will be able to support all our operators in participating.
That's great. Any other comments, questions from councillors? Nothing? Well, you said it all, so thank you for that. And all in favor of that motion? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, so moving on to item E, and I guess I have a question to the clerk. It's sort of an open-ended motion, so I just say that correspondence received and looking for directions. So why do I put it on the floor? Okay, so if somebody care to put that correspondence on the floor, and then we can decide if there's any direction passed to being received. So Council Larry, Council Woodbury, okay? So. Okay, so I'm going to go to you, Madam CEO, okay?
Good morning, Council, and thank you, Deputy Warden. This correspondence is before you, and I know I have had a couple of conversations with folks because it's somewhat unusual to see email correspondence come to us like this. This was a discussion with questions that were posed originally to our manager of climate change initiatives. And Linda is going to speak to that conversation in a minute. But after some back and forth with this resident, the request was made that this come and be put on a council agenda for further discussion and direction from all of you. So that is why it's there, because the correspondent asked that it be placed on the agenda. And I think, Linda, you can provide to council now some of the flavor of asked and the answered questions and kind of where the outstanding matters are right now. Thanks.
Thanks, Madam CEO, and Linda, do you have more to add? Go ahead.
Thank you. So as C A O Ring Grove indicated, Mr. Tamming reached out to ask some questions regarding the Climate Change Action Plan, and in particular, the role of animal agriculture, both in the plan and also in Gray County's emissions overall. And so, as he indicated in his correspondence, due to the very successful livestock industry in Gray County, a significant portion of our greenhouse gas emissions do come from animal agriculture, approximately 33%. And in the plan itself, we recognize that, and we do lay out and identify agriculture as one of the priority action areas. We, as I spoke to a couple of weeks ago, really looked at all of the possible actions Gray County could take and tried to prioritize them based on four criteria. How much greenhouse gas emissions could we avoid? What was the relative cost to implement? What were the other community benefits that could be realized, be they job creation or affordability? And then finally, where did the county have the most influence? And so we did identify supporting agricultural capacity building as one of the four foundational pillars of our plan, but also recognize that in comparison to some of the other areas, it's not an area where the county has a significant amount of influence. And so we identify in the plan different possible actions, including working with organizations like Gray Agricultural Services, alternative land use services to support the wonderful programming they already have to increase the sustainability of our agricultural sector and support sort of emerging low-carbon and decarbonization activities.
Well, thanks, Linda. That sort of did a very round approach toward that, I think, anyway. But so receiving it, we really don't got really any direction of moving forward on that. So I guess we'll open it up for conversation here across the table. Any comments to? Any comments to what is being requested or any thoughts toward this? I keep looking at Counselor Millen and Cowers, and... But I know that I will make one comment that I know if you remove... With the cattle business, you have pasture and hay, which is a carbon capturing part. And if you lose those cows, those cattle, and it becomes cash crop, then you're releasing carbon. So it's sort of trying to find that balance of what you're doing. So, yeah, it's not a perfect world out there, for sure. But I know that, I think, that's what you, Madam CEO, that that was University of Wealth is looking at different feed products that do help reduce gassing and stuff like that. So, you know, there will be probably through innovation and through science, technology, that they may change some things there as well. But, sorry, Madam CEO, you were going to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and excellent points that you're raising. I think if what we could have from this council today is simply your confirmation of support for the climate change plan and for the recommendations that were, are within that plan, I think that would suffice today, that you believe that the plan as it's proposed is the correct plan and the appropriate plan for Gray County to be supporting at this time. Certainly, all of this work is very much work in progress. We learn new things every day. There's new technology every day that will be constantly monitoring and taking into account. But at this point in time, we as staff, and I think to this letter writer, want to have that confirmation that we are staying the course. We support the recommendations as they were drafted, and we intend to continue on to implement this plan.
Sort of on the radar. So the mover in a second there, because do we, do we need amendment to that? Or how do you wish to deal with that amendment, Kirk?
We will need an amendment if that's the way that this council would like to proceed with reiterating support for the Climate Change Action Plan that was approved by County Council just recently, and that staff be directed to reiterate the impacts and mitigation opportunities included in that Climate Change Action Plan.
Counselor, okay, I have Counselor Keveney and then Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden, and I'm wondering if we could add in that amendment and mention of our agricultural committee. When we met, I believe it was two meetings ago, there was substantial discussion when Linda introduced the Climate Change Action Plan, and I think we were all really impressed to hear about the initiatives that our agricultural community is already implementing. And so I just thought it might be appropriate to include their input in this amendment.
Thank you for that comment. So, Madam Clerk, is that a friendly or is that amendment to the amendment? I can look at the mover in the second, or if...
Yes, I agree.
They say it's a friendly, okay, well, thank you for that. And go ahead, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and I think Counselor Keveney touched upon. My interest was in our agricultural committee, and whether how in-depth the Agriculture Advisory Committee did look at our climate action change and whether they're in full support of it. The reference, you know, within the letter around reduction of cattle herds and stuff, I mean, I don't think any of us want to see that happen within Gray County. We recognize the importance of farming. Just want to make sure that it's not a slippery slope with our climate action change, that we are, you know, possibly looking at that, but looking at other mitigation measures instead of the reduction of herd sizes. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Counselor Mackey. Any other comments, questions to the amendment that is on the floor? All right, seeing none, then all in favor of the amendment? Look at everybody's hand here. Okay, that's carried unanimously. So now we have the amended main motion that was moved by Counselor Leary and Counselor Woodbury. Need further discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of that motion? That's carried unanimously. All right, so that takes care of that part of the business, then. Thank you for everyone for doing that. All right, so now we're on to other business. Is there any other business that needs to be spoken to? I guess the one question. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Just had a question for the CEO. Is there any plans in the future to put an end to virtual meetings?
Madam CEO.
I think this is something that we continue to talk about and look at and try to understand what's happening across the whole municipal sector. We have, I think, found that there's been a great benefit for our committee meetings and allowing people to participate virtually there, especially when we've got a mix of attendees, not only elected officials such as yourself, but members of the public, and given the size of Gray County and the fact that committee meetings are often in the daytime, it's hoped that that helps with the participation for those meetings if you can eliminate the, some of the travel time. And I think people have come, become somewhat accustomed to having choice. That said, what we're seeing happen with regard to council and committee of the whole meetings is that there are a number of municipalities who have put some boundaries around that, if I will, saying that the expectation is that councilors will participate in person and that there's a, you know, a small number of opportunities to participate remotely so as to, I think, address sometimes the concern that people might be outside of the country, for example, for an extended period of time and unable to participate in person. I'm going to ask the clerks, who have also spent some time talking about this. My thought was that we were looking at something beginning in the fall, but I'll turn it over to Heather.
Thank you, CAO Windgrove. As she noted, we have it in our procedural bylaw. That electronic participation is a method of participation. That was a change in the municipal act. And it's not something that we entertained until we got into the pandemic. With regards to our committees and task forces, we do have a number that have public stakeholders on there. And as Ms. Windgrove indicated, we find that their participation is excellent when it comes to virtual meetings and allowing them to be at home or at work or wherever they are and still participate as a stakeholder and provide that valuable input into those task forces that help guide the decision-making at this table. For council here, when electronic participation was first brought forward, there were no parameters put on that. I do know that some municipalities have put those on for a year, six a year, that kind of thing. There are none at this table at this time.
Counselor Leary?
Thanks for that information. So I'm not really pushing to do one or the other, but I do worry about a counselor maybe spending the winter in Florida and doing all their meetings from virtually, and I think that's, excuse me, I think that's heading down the wrong road, sort of thing, but just thought I'd bring it up. Thanks.
Good point. I guess there could be a number, but I know certain circumstances where people maybe don't feel well, but they can still participate. So I guess that's one advantage of having, if you're not feeling well, you're not bringing it, but you can still participate. So I do see that as one option that does allow that, or if you have appointments or certain things. So I presume that you folks are going to monitor it, and you're going to be able to bring back newer updated policy. Okay, any other other business? I was going to raise to you, Madam CEO, I know it was put out that the email conference is coming up, and I think by June up there, are there any delegations that we want to, you know, maybe sign up for? I don't know, to give that some thought. Oh, so I'm thinking ahead, so there you go. So, and if there's other things you're thinking of there as well, delegation points that we need to raise, then that'd be the time to bring it forward. No other other business? All right, notice of motions. Are there any notice of motions that wish to be brought forward today? Okay, so I see Counselor Body has not put his hand up today, and I don't know if he wants the next motion or not. And I wondered if Counselor Borin Yon, they get that right better this time? Would like to be the second or the adjournment. Yes, okay. All in favor of that motion? All right, that's carried unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day. Lunch is available around twelve, around twelve. So you can have your social time. You got twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes, so.